I apologize for the technical delays. I've got trustee Anthony with me this evening. Clerk Segrist, could we please call the roll?
All right, trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Evening.
Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens is en route, but not currently here. I'm a marker present when she gets here. Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for a motion to approve the agenda with two guest speakers added if they are present.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion by roll call?
All right, trustee Anthony. Anthony. Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Hi.
Segrist, aye. Snyderman?
Yes.
Anne Williams.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Call for a motion, please, to approve two sets of minutes and clerk Segrist, if you could give us that motion.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the minutes with one amendment for April 21st and April 28th as presented with one adjustment for the April 21st. The title for item G2 is incorrect. I would strike that title and add just resolution.
Okay, that's, and then this, okay, so we're gonna do this in two motions or also for the approval of the April 28, 2020 meeting as well?
Yeah, yep, both meetings, just the amendment to the April 21st in one motion.
Very good.
Was that a motion or seconded?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve. Roll call, vote.
All right, Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Let me double check my panel to see if Treasurer Slavens is on. Looks like not yet. Okay, Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
Motion gas.
Now would be, yes? Now would be the time on the agenda for any citizens' non-agenda item comments or public comment. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? And clerk Segrist, the best way to do this would be to raise a hand?
Yep, that would be the option. There's also the ability to type something into the question and answer, but anyone who is an attendee can make a comment. We have one raised hand, I see, currently. Healthy amount of individuals on the list here as attendees. Would you like me to allow that individuals to talk, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. All right.
Before we do, yeah, as we do that, Mike, I would ask that the speaker limit their comments to three minutes. And confirm that it's their name and address, if they could share that with us. Not a requirement, but we'd like to have that information for the public record.
All right, all right, Gagni, I'm going to allow you to speak. And you can be, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, clerk Segrist. My name is Gagni Kingura, and I am the community liaison for Wayne County Commissioner Melissa Dobbs. I just wanted to call in and let everyone know that Commissioner Dobbs will be hosting a virtual town hall event alongside Wayne County Prosecutor Kim Worthy and Commissioner Terry Morecki, who represents Livonia and Northville. The meeting is going to be taking place this Thursday, May 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Zoom. This event is going to address how the prosecutor's office is responding to the COVID crisis in relation to increased instances of domestic violence during the stay-at-home order, reducing the jail population, the prosecutor's sexual assault kit initiative, and more. We're thrilled that the prosecutor has agreed to join us. If anyone is interested, all the details for the event are posted on the commissioner's Facebook page. That's Commissioner Melissa Dobbs. We have a page for it under events. If, for any reason, anyone can't make the Zoom meeting that we're going to be having, we are going to be recording the event and posting it at a later date. And we're also going to be streaming it live to Facebook, so if anyone has any issues with Zoom, there will be an alternative way to watch it. So again, that is this Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here on Zoom. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to our office. Our email is district10@wayncounty.com. And thanks, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you.
I see no addition.
Okay, it looks like Will Hayes has joined Chad Baugh. Yes?
It's true, sir. It was due to the video issues.
No, no problem. All right, so next item on the agenda with Treasurer Slavens, I see, has joined us. Call for a motion to payment of the bills.
So moved.
You have to unmute.
Sorry about that. Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
So moved.
Support, okay, support from trustee Anthony. Those in favor of the motion by roll call, vote please.
Anthony.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Supervisor, Williams.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda, we'd like to have Will Hayes. I don't know if you can adjust your camera, maybe switch spots. Chad with Will and, Will Hayes, for those who have not met Will, is our emergency manager, management coordinator for Canton Township. He's been working very hard behind the scenes the last several weeks on the COVID-19 pandemic that we are all living through and experience the real times. Will, could you please give us a brief update on what's happening in your arena?
Sure, you know, as we know, this coronavirus and in the Hubei province in China back in January, we started getting wind of that. We began our preparations. Of course, we have our emergency operations plan for the township already, but this was something unique and we knew it was going to be big. In, on February 11th, the county health department held a workshop to let us know what they knew about this new virus. We brought that back to the township, shared it with township leadership as well as public safety leadership, so we could begin our preparations for this virus. As a Public Act 390 emergency manager, I sit on the borders, represent a number of different groups, including the Wayne County Chiefs of Police, Wayne County, Western Wayne County Mutual Aid Fire Association, and the Health Emergency Medical Service, which allows me to exchange information and updates and that with situational awareness with those members, those key stakeholders in our community. At the beginning of March, I recognized that this was going to be a significant impact to much of the community, much of the nation. And we activated, did a partial activation of our emergency operations center. And by that, what we mean is we continued to monitor the spread and the impact as it was moving closer and closer to our area. By March 6th, and prior to any COVID-19 cases within Michigan, I prepared the first of 66, and that number is ongoing. Situational reports, which provide leadership, both in public safety and within the township, situational awareness on the status of the spread of the virus and the efforts that we're undertaking to minimize that spread and reduce the impact to our, both our community as well as our own employees. Through a number of social media and electronic platforms, we were able to share information on how to reduce likelihood of catching this disease and also how to prevent the spread of it. In consultation and coordination with the Wayne County Health Department and the governor's directions, we acted to close township offices to help flatten the curve. And those efforts now seem to be paying off, paying dividends, as we find ourselves now in a period of containment. The numbers are flattening. The new cases and deaths are beginning to trend in the right direction, and we see some light at the end of the tunnel. As a result, I'm working with a team of dedicated township employees who are taking proactive measures to ensure the safety of our employees, both when they return to work and those who have already returned, as well as the public, the public, once the stay-home order is lifted. Actions such as employee monitoring, wearing a face mask, social distancing, limiting the number of employees in any one space, adding hand sanitizer stations throughout the township facilities, deep cleaning, doing things like the Zoom meetings that we are tonight to help encourage that social distancing. I look forward to continuing these efforts until we can resume full township operations. That's all I have.
You are currently muted. I'm going to unmute you, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, I'll rewind the tape, hit play again. Thank you, Will. We do appreciate all your efforts the past several weeks. And I know you're going to be working with the communications team closely in the next several weeks to make sure that we've got good information going out to the residents in terms of education and just keeping folks updated. With recent consensus was reached with the Board of Trustees, asking us to increase the amount of communication going out to the community. So we appreciate everything you've done. Are there any board questions, any trustee questions at this time, or Will? Go ahead, John.
Do we know how many COVID-19 cases are in Canton Township and how many deaths in Canton Township?
We just exceeded 500 cases yesterday. We were up to 502. And I think the death rate was at 50 even yesterday. Obviously, we're one of the larger communities in Western Wayne County or in the Out County, I should say, Out County area, which excludes Detroit. So with testing, the intense testing, we've just partnered with Walmart. We conduct testing down at Michigan Ave at the Walmart down there. And Rite Aid, also down on the south end of town, has also began testing, which we keep hearing the governor and Dr. Joanie Caldoon speak about enhanced testing, and that will help us to better understand how this virus is moving, spreading, or if it's actually contracting. So we can make informed decisions based on those numbers.
Thank you.
Anne Marie? I'm going to have to unmute Anne Marie, please.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all your work. I was wondering, based on the numbers that you gave, are we able, can you give a percentage as to how many of those cases or deaths are from our senior centers versus our general population?
I don't, I don't have the exact numbers, Anne Marie. I do know that there is a very high percentage of our calls that are coming from the senior centers. It's not unique to Canton. My counterparts within the emergency management community have been trying desperately to get additional testing done at the nursing homes. We have a pilot program that we wrote that we're trying to get implemented, to get testing at our senior centers and not just for the seniors. Because as you know, very early on in this pandemic, the senior centers and nursing homes were essentially locked down. So the only people coming and going from them would have been employees. These larger facilities have multiple locations, so one day I might be working in Dearborn, the next day I might be working in Canton. The following day, I may be working in Livonia. And those employees are going home and interacting and going to the store. And I think they may be the ones that are bringing it into the facility. So working closely with Chief Stockline, we're trying to get into each of these nursing homes and help them with their PPE needs and training on donning and doffing the PPE and different protocol like that for them.
That's good. So, yeah, I heard that before, that you guys are working on the process, because I know that they're not very consistent. These employees come in and out, so I'm glad that you're doing that. Do you think that that's helping at all? I think.
Yeah, I think it is, and I think it will pay dividends. We've been able to get some of our donated personal protective equipment. We, of course, can't use township just equipment for that, but using some of the resources that some of our community members who have been very gracious have donated, were able to get them some of the supplies they so desperately need. As you heard very early on, there was shortage of masks, there was shortage of gloves, there was a shortage of a number of these things. We were situated very well, and again, with the community that we live in and that we serve, they were very gracious to us in making good donations. So we were able to return that to our community, and they are very grateful to us for that.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee, I can also.
Go ahead, Stephen. I'm sorry, Coach.
Oh, I, well, actually, I have something to ask Chris and, and Bill as well as, do we know where, what medical facilities our residents are being taken to when they need extreme measures? And are there any that are in Canton that are housing them, or are they all going to the hospitals?
Defer that to Chris.
Yeah, we only have the ability to transfer to emergency rooms through our mental control. So those would be in hospitals that we normally transport to, St. Joe, St. Mary, U of M. Those were the three main hospitals that we're going to. Now that Annapolis has opened back up, we can also transport there. And to add to that, as of March 3rd, we had 96 potential COVID patients that were transferred out of their nursing homes.
Thank you. Nice to hear that one.
Yeah, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Thank you. So what do we do? I know that, I had a resident call me because they were, their son was running around the track at Liberty Middle School. And he was, the police went up, drove up and said, you need to leave. Are we, how are we enforcing things like that? I mean, are we taking proactive, or is it when somebody calls? It seemed like somebody probably called at that point. But what is our process for keeping groups small or helping out stores? How are we doing that during this, the governor's orders?
Sorry, sorry, Anne. Just to teach real quick, for the police department, we are the ones generally responding to those. And we have taken the position of education is how we help our citizens through these executive orders. We have not taken any formal action through a court process at this point. Our citizens have responded pretty well to the instruction that we've provided.
Summer?
I'm sorry, Summer. I've unmuted Summer, please.
I have a quick question. So a few weeks back, I can't remember if Will sent it or if Chris or Chad sent it, but it was a graphic that showed like where clusters of cases were coming from. Do we have that updated data? And if so, is that something that you can send out to the Board of Trustees?
I can have that data run this evening, and I'll get it sent out to you.
Thank you.
Anne Marie?
Sorry. So are we, do we see a number of stores asking for assistance? Because I know some stores do have the rule now that you cannot come in with a mask, without a mask. So in Canton, are we seeing more stores ask for assistance or no? It's kind of the same.
So, very interesting question, Anne Marie. That's, that's a, this has been a unique emergency for us. I've dealt with a number of different emergencies. This one, because of the scope of the emergency, the fact that it was not just the state of Michigan or just the northeast region, it was the entire country, in fact, the entire world. So we were all essentially competing for the same personal protective equipment. And for this emergency, the state had decided that they were going to push it down to the local emergency managers, the people who are actually on the ground where the needs were at, for us to enter this information into MySims, which is the Michigan Critical Incident Management System. It's a statewide, web-driven, situational awareness platform, so that we would, we would then push out that, those supplies as we would receive them. As I mentioned earlier, one of the early proposals by the state was that we assist some of these funeral homes, nursing homes, assisted living facilities by purchasing them personal protective equipment, and we were unable to do that. We, it's, we can't use township funds for that. So we pushed back on the state. And then we were able to just generate the reports, the requests for them in the system. And if the state can get that, then we were able to deliver some of those supplies to those facilities. That's how we were able to do that through MySims. And then, again, utilizing our donations. We've received requests from funeral, funeral services, from nursing homes and assisted living, senior care facilities, senior living, congregate care, as well as now schools have been reaching out to get some of those supplies. And what we're doing now is we are directing them, the supply chains are loosening up a bit. We're able to get PPE in a more timely manner. So what we're doing now is we're referring them to the Michigan Chamber of Commerce, who is actively working with a number of Michigan vendors to get that PPE for these people as needed.
Okay, thank you. Is, and are they asking you to enforce at the stores at all, or no, in Canton or Canton Township?
To answer that, Anne, we have not had correct enforcement. The citizens will call and essentially inform us about potential violations. And we react from the standpoint of education, like I said before.
Okay, thank you.
The only, I'll pile on there a little bit is, I get, I continue to get resident calls basically sharing with me their concern about what their neighbors are doing. And that's all being forwarded over to Chad. Okay, I'm seeing no other questions at this time. Thank you, Will. Well done. Keep it up and have a good night. So we'll, we'll be seeing more of you. The, we did have Michael, I think, a public comment. Did I see a resident there that wanted to speak in the public comment? I'm willing to go back, if the team's willing to go back.
If you would like to entertain that, yeah, I did see that. I was going to, because, and, but I will.
Yeah, I'd rather pick it up now than as opposed at the end of the meeting.
All right, let me go to.
If it was public.
And what, all right, allow to. All right.
Oh. Hey, can you hear me?
All right, you're all set.
Okay, so.
Yes.
I tried to come in on the telephone, and then we had to jump on, online here. So I think you can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for taking my, my comment. This is new, new to me. Okay. Two issues I want to address tonight. I had a situation here today that has been a long, ongoing problem with 540 Haggerty Road. The situation, in a, in a quick summary, was this property was sold to a development company. Development company came in front of the planning commission for a rezoning and a development of the property. I stood up and I spoke, and I said their, their rights were recognized as long as this abandoned house would be demolished. They have subsequently come back now and said the plans have dramatically changed, and this house is now subject to become a rental home. My question would be to the township board, that this was put forward to be a development site? Can this now revert back to a simple rental home? There was some incidents here today with the fire department, with some chemical barrels that were suspect, that were left by the prior owner, not the development company current owner. It's their responsibility to clean it up. It got into a heated situation again. And I think this all was let down, as I was told originally, that the, the situation was going to be rectified when they demolished the home. So that's the situation on that. My second topic, which seems that they're coming at me from all directions, fighting the Wayne County, the other piece of property I own for my family, which is 42875 Cherry Hill. Supervisor Williams has been involved in, there's a conflict with the design of the drainage. I was told that it's very difficult to override the county, it's the project. And the more I've thought about this, I think there should be going forward some type of community panel or committee that would represent the residents to, to look at how it impacts the area, to bring fairness to the community of Canton. So citizens just can't get run over on this process, where there would be a voice or a citizen input and an advocate for the citizens. I would gladly volunteer for such panel. And those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much. And just a brief response to, I guess, in reverse order. It's a new idea, so, so let us, as a group, think about that in terms of creating a committee to respond and react to projects that are going on in the community. So I'll take that assignment as a walk takeaway. And then the first item, again, reverse order. I know public safety did go out. We had Norton's officer go out and did speak to the.
I accidentally went to mute Mr. McClosland, and I removed him from the meeting, so he is not hearing anything that you're saying right now.
Okay, well, I will do a follow-up with him tomorrow unless he calls back in, and then we'll try to do it back at the backside.
If I, if I see him come in as an attendee, I will notify you. I apologize to everybody and.
No worries, if it's a.
You are watching, I apologize.
Yeah, it's new technology. We have to be flexible. So let's move on now with the general calendar. Item, first item up would be General G1, consider approval of site plan for HDDS, Canton Dermatology Phase II MSD.
Mr. Supervisor. I move. Oh, boy. Okay, my, we have crashed. This is fantastically comical.
Okay, my fault. Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Would you like me to go ahead and try to read the?
No, allow me one moment. My network drive got disconnected and the PDF stopped working. So I'm reloading PDF. I'm going to go to item G1, and I'm going to read the resolution. Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board, that the resolution of the Board of Trustees, for County of Canton, the approval of Phase II site for HDD at dermatology. Where the project sponsor, Canton Township, has requested site plan approval for medical office building west side of Canton Center Road, north of Cherry Hill Road. And whereas Planning Commission will view the request and voted to recommend approval, subject to modification of the north and west building sods, which have been incorporated to revised building elevations, now therefore be a result. The board of trustees of the charter township of Canton, Michigan, does hereby approve the site plan for approval. The second phase of the HDD at Canton Dermatology Office slash Commercial Center on parcel numbers listed, as amended to the planning commission's recommendation, substitute all applicable local and state requirements.
Support.
Okay, thank you, Summer. Okay, in terms of a summary, the first phase of this commercial office complex located on 6.2 acres of land are located at Cherry Hill Road and west of Canton Center, consisted of 10,000 square foot medical office buildings served by the existing driveway, driveway to the bank site off of Canton Center. The original site plan approved in 2017 showed a concept for future phases. Phase II includes an 18,000 square foot medical office, building and associated parking and landscaping in the northwest corner of the property. The building design is similar to the style of Phase I building, which has been completed. I think it's a beautiful building, that's the first one they put up, and this is tucked in behind roses there. Is there any board comment or questions or jate on this one? I don't believe we have any attendees, do we, on this topic?
They may be watching the meeting. I'm not sure whether Bill is here or not.
Okay, we also, thank you, Jeff. And then also, yeah, question from Steve Snyderman. Steve, we're gonna have to unmute you.
All right, I think I can unmute myself. Um, let's see. Um, so I noticed. So I noticed, well, I'd be interested in hearing, I don't know if Anne Marie was at this planning session meeting, but I'd just be interested in hearing any perspective she had on it. But first, I noticed in the minutes, some discussion of the elevation and enhancing the elevation in the planning session minutes. So I was wondering if that was done. And then Jeff, I guess my second question. Are they meeting going forward?
So I heard the first question. I heard the first question. Yeah, they asked, they added additional architectural features to the roof line and the facade on the west and north side to match the faces that were facing the parking lot. So they did complete that. So those were reviewed by the, the members of the planning commission that made the comments at the meeting. So those have been resolved. The future phases of the project will be in at a later time. There may be one or two more buildings on the site.
My, my other question was, is the planning commission meeting during these times?
Our next meeting is scheduled at June 15th. We'll be holding public hearings that were postponed from April. So we'll be holding those at the Village Theater to provide for an onsite meeting and social distancing. So we have, so we, we have meetings that have been postponed and we were in the process of renoticing and rep publication of those meetings.
And then lastly, Mister Supervisor, and if we're going to be in this mode, I don't know how much longer we are, but at some point, we may want to do, start doing maybe share, screen sharing on some of these diagrams and stuff so the public can see them as well. It probably.
We absolutely do have the ability. And Anne Marie, you're gonna share what the planning commission had to say and what the thoughts were there.
Yeah, just like Jeff said, I mean, a couple of the planning commissioners didn't like the elevations. And so they did update them. Another thing was the vegetation. But we had asked a question about even a market review because we do have a lot of smaller dermatology offices. And this particular group said they're taking three of their offices and combining them into one under this roof. So they're, they're obviously doing well and it's getting a lot of Canton customers. So that's good for Canton that way. But it does, I didn't see the picture of the new facade, but I know that was kind of one of the conditions moving forward is that they fixed that and it does say they did.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add too, I just became a new client of Dr. Hamzabi's and I've been pushed off. And it's a, what do you call it, online.
Or telephone.
Yeah, it's weird. Very strange. All right, any additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Call for a roll, roll call vote on the motion.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudak.
Hi.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Terrible motion, item G2, consider approval of preliminary site plan for Canton Sherif Site Condominium.
Mister Supervisor, I move at the board about the following resolution for approval of preliminary site plan for Canton Sherif Site Condominium. Whereas project sponsor has requested approval of a preliminary site plan for Canton Sherif located on the west side of Lily Roads, just south of the road. And whereas, at its meeting on March 2, 2020, the planning commission reviewed the preliminary site plan and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the request as it meets all applicable design standards of the condominium ordinance and zoning ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved, the board trustees will check. Is hereby approve the preliminary site plan of the Canton Sherif on tax parcel listed as provided in the plan documents, subject to any and all applicable state and local development regulations.
In terms of the summary, the applicant.
Support, support.
Thank you, guys. The Summer, I think, and Diane both, but Summer first. The, the applicant proposes to locate 10 single-family residential site condo units on the 4.75 acres located on the west side of Lily Road, just south of Palmer. One cul-de-sac road is proposed from Lily. The project meets all applicable design standards of the condominium ordinance and zoning ordinances. The site is currently contains overhead electric lines near the front of the site, which are proposed to be relocated to Lily Road right away. Are there any board comments or questions for either Jeff or Jade? Okay, I think we saw this initially. I see, go ahead, Diane, please.
I just was gonna make a quick comment that I, I did see in the notes that the, the fire department did approve this as well, in case, you know, they have to go into that cul-de-sac. So, which is important things.
Absolutely. Good.
One.
Let's see, no. Okay, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Yeah, there's one concern because this is just south of Palmer Road on Lily and you have a light there, which, which controls traffic, which is good. So I don't know, maybe in the future that timing might need to be adjusted because as people come and go in and out during work day. So that was just one issue there.
Do you know other comments or questions? Call for a roll, roll call vote.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye.
Now, item G3, consider approval of low bidders for the 2020 tree removal and pruning project to Arbor Master Tree Servicing and Owen Tree Service.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the pre-pruning and removal bids and issue purchase orders from expenditure number listed to Arbor Master Tree Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $40,500 into Owen Tree Services Incorporated for an amount not to $9,000.
Support.
Thank you. Four bids were received for the 2020 tree removal and pruning project to take care of removal of dead trees and structural and dead limb pruning, pruning on existing trees along major county roads. Where we have maintenance responsibilities for the street trees. Arbor Master was a low qualified bidder based on base bids for Sheldon Road and portions of Lily, Beck and Palmer Roads, as well as unit pruning for individual trees. Owen Tree Service was a low bidder for tree removal services for individual miscellaneous trees and will provide arborist consultation services to us. Are there any questions for Jade on this agenda? Okay, seeing no questions or comments, roll call vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Yep.
Williams.
Aye.
Okay, item G4, consider approval and award of purchase order to Weingart's Outdoor Equipment to purchase two X mark laser X series zero turn mowers in the amount of $20,798.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award a purchase order, count Weingart's, for an amount not to exceed $20,798 for the purchase of two exam X mark laser X series zero turn mowers.
Support.
Thank you, Summer. Many different mower brands have been demonstrated and priced. X mark has been found to be the best matching for mowing needs of the Public Works Department. To avoid competition amongst dealers, X mark provide equal pricing to all government entities. Weingart's in Farmington Hills has been chosen as the vendor of choice due to the location and are also well known for service of parts, their service of parts department. Is there any, are there any questions for Director Hollenberger on this topic or comments? Steve, I see you leaning in, and, no? Okay. All right, seeing no questions or comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, roll call vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye.
Item G5, consider approval of emergency purchase orders.
Mister Supervisor, I move to approve the emergency purchase orders to DBS Print and Marketing for a total of $17,632.
Support.
Okay, in accordance with the resolution passed by the board trustees on March 17, 2020, regarding COVID-19, which reiterated the emergency provisions in the purchasing policy would be relied upon for any purchases needed during the state of emergency. There were four purchases requiring board approval that exceeded the $10,000 limit. The purchases were for COVID-related equipment. The public safety department has been pricing out all the supplies, searching for the best cost available or purchasing as a sole source when the supplies were unavailable elsewhere. All the purchases were approved by the requesting department head, finance director, and two full-time electives prior to the purchases being made. In accordance with our purchasing policy, an emergency purchase order is required to come before the trustee at the next regular board meeting. So this is a, a matter of just cleaning up the paperwork. Are there any questions for Director Trumpo or comments? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented by roll call vote?
I'm sorry, Anthony?
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Item G6, consider approving an extension of the animal control services contract.
Right. Mister Supervisor, I move to approve a three-year contract extension with Varmint Police Incorporated, 12749 Turtle Hill Road. Will this in the amount of 50, $5,053.4 a month to $60,641.28 annually.
Support.
All right, this request is for continuation with our current vendor, Varmint Police, Inc. They've been doing a great job for us for several years. And they, they are holding their, their pricing for us year over year. Let's see, anything else that is significant right now? Varmint Police, Inc., personnel have continually maintained a strong working relationship with township staff and residents. Per the current agreement, the police department contacted Varmint Police about extending the contract for an additional three years. Varmint Police agreed the extension has been offered at the current rate again. By extending this contract, Varmint Police agrees to continue to provide trained animal control officer to urgently respond to animal complaints utilizing efficient and humane means. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Fireman Police also provides animal transportation either to either or either a designated shelter, humane society, or rehabilitation center. Privatization of animal control service is the most effective way of providing a high level of animal control service to the community as opposed to costs associated with utilizing internally. Are there any questions that anybody or comments anybody would like to make at this time to Director Baugh? Chad is online with us. So continuation of the existing contract. Go ahead, Stephen.
I was just wondering if this is only, and I just can't remember because I know we've done this before, if this is only for police initiated, initiated removals? Or can a resident request and participate in this contract?
Sure, I can answer that. The criteria for calling the contract contractor, which is Varmint Police, has to be on public property or accessible on private property to the public. We do make some discretionary calls when there's safety issues for our residents. And that's when they start to get involved on occasion for sick or any type of ordinance violation on private property. But that's with consent of the owner or the property owner.
Seeing no, okay, Anne Marie, please.
Thanks. How often do we use them? I mean, and do they come for deer and hurt raccoons and everything? Or is it, how often do you usually have to call them?
Generally, we'll see up to 10, 12 times a month on occasion. With wild animals like that, this, we don't use them necessarily for that unless it's extraordinary circumstance. But some of those animals like deer and stuff, the police officers are able to handle.
Okay, thanks.
No additional comment? Those in favor of the motion as presented, roll call vote.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Well, Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Item G7, consider renewing the license plate reader annual subscription.
Approve the renewal of Vigilant Solutions License Plate Reader Annual Subscription through Capital Electronics Plainfield, in the amount of $11,250.
Support.
Thank you. Police Department is requesting to renew their annual subscription for this license through Capital Electronics, Inc., in the amount as stated. Forfeits are funded, are budgeted for this 2020 expense. In 2018, the police department approved the purchase of the license plate reader from Vigilant Solutions back in 2019. The RBA included purchase price as well as an annual subscription cost quoted, then at the $14,995. The subscription includes uploading license plate information, access to searchable database, software updates, systems service, and new hardware. Are there any questions or comments for Chad, Director Baugh? Chad? The, early on, I remember hearing about some successes with this equipment. Are we continuing to see?
Certainly, the, the database is really, really critical because it cuts down on personnel hours of locating wanted vehicles and people using vehicles that are wanted throughout the region, Southeast Michigan. We're able to resolve a lot of crimes that have actually happened in Canton and also with our partnerships outside of Canton to help resolve crime before it actually comes to Canton. So we've been very fortunate using this equipment to, anywhere from stolen cars to major assaults, we're able to help mitigate the time it takes to locate people through their cars.
Any comments, questions for Director Baugh? Chad Baugh? No, see, none?
I have a question. Sorry. Director, Deputy Director, can you let me know? Maybe, so what, what are we looking for when we, when these license plates are? Is it for any crime? Anybody who has a bench warrant? Is there a standard, a threshold? I'm just thinking about, in today's society, I know that personal privacy is sometimes seen as the new civil rights movement. And so I'm just curious, like, what do we, you know, are we scanning every license plate? Are we looking for everything? What?
Certainly, we would. There's a, there is the ability to use it for any type of crime. But what we use it for primarily are major crimes or crime series that are affecting Canton. We do not use this to find where people are parking their cars that have some type of traffic offense warrant. That is not the intent of this tool.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Director, Anne Marie.
Yeah, so just, and we only had it in one vehicle last year, correct?
That's correct.
And it's only gonna be in one vehicle again?
That's correct.
Thanks.
It should be noted that the, is the database is the key, key to this subscription. Access to that database and to be able to use that resource is critical to the success that we're talking about.
Thank you. Those in favor of the motion as presented, roll call vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Item G8, request to consider authorizing the filing of an appeal in the matter of FP Development versus Canton Township.
Mister Supervisor, this is in the form of two, two motions. I move to authorize the filing of an appeal in the matter of FP Development v. Canton Township.
Support.
In summary, as the board. In summary, as the board is aware, the U.S. District Court Judge George Cameron Schi has ruled that Township's forest preservation and tree clearing ordinance constitutes an unconstitutional taking under the Fifth Amendment. Due to the wide range and wide-ranging impact, negative impact for this ruling will not have, not only for Canton, but other local governments as well, the recommendation is to repeal the ruling, and that's what's being requested today. I know that attorney called to send out a great deal of information in preparation. Does anybody have any questions specifically for Crystal? Or for counsel, legal counsel? Go ahead, John.
Crystal, any ideas to the dollar amount that will be spent in appealing this?
Um, the estimates are pretty wide-ranging. It depends on the amount of briefing the court ultimately allows, but best guess is between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars. Litigating the case thus far has cost the township around thirty-three thousand dollars.
What do you think is the likelihood of success? Judge George is referred to by federal law enforcement officials. He's a pretty tough judge from a criminal standpoint. I don't know how he is on the civil side of the house, but he seems to be a very fair, intelligent judge. He's been on the bench since nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah.
And I don't know of any negative issues that he might have, but it's tough to get cases reversed. The Sixth Circuit doesn't have a very good track record, or he doesn't have a very good track, he has a very good track record with the Sixth Circuit at not getting his cases reversed. He has more cases upheld than he has reversed. What are your thoughts on the likelihood of this case being reversed, no matter how much money is spent?
Well, it's difficult to tell. I mean, obviously, we think his decision is wrong, and reading the decision in detail over the past few weeks since it was issued, we think there's some pretty big points that he missed. One of them is that specifically under state law, local governments are given authority to regulate natural resources. It's impossible to predict what the court will do. I will tell you, there was a similar case a few years back involving the city of Howell, and the dispute was over a city ordinance that required the mowing of that strip of grass between public roads and sidewalks. A resident challenged that in federal court, and the district court, which is the first level in federal court, struck the ordinance, and they appealed it to the Sixth Circuit, and the Sixth Circuit overturned that ruling. And one of the bases for overturning it, you know, without getting too much into the legal weeds, was these ordinances are not uncommon. They are, there's a rational basis to have them because, you know, in that specific case, how could any local government afford to mow all those strips of grass? Part of the argument that we're making is, if, if property developers are permitted to just come in and mow down these properties, what does that mean for the state law that says, but, but we get to regulate natural resources? So I think we've got a pretty good argument for a whole list of reasons I don't need to get into right now. I also think we will get a lot of support. I have already reached out to the Townships Association, the Michigan Association of Planners, the group of the state bar that is made up of local government lawyers. Potentially, we're going to reach out to the MML. We think there's a lot of groups that will have an interest in this question and will support and submit briefs on behalf, or I can say on behalf of Canton, but in support of Canton's ordinance and other similar ordinances in the state of Michigan, and again, probably across the country. But unfortunately, we just have to go through the process and see if we can be successful.
Thank you. Summer?
Um, did, so you mentioned the MML and the MTA. Did they submit briefs to the other court? And do you think that we will get any support from any communities directly, or will they do it through their, through the MML or the MTA?
So we did not have any support in the district court, and that's typical. It would be unusual for an agency or a group such as MTA or MML to get involved at the first level. They typically don't get involved until the appellate level. And then what would, oh, typically, you don't see local governments filing amicus briefs. Typically, it comes again through those associations because, you know, local government pay into funds that those associations maintain that specifically for the purpose of getting involved in matters like this. So it would be unusual if an individual government filed an amicus brief, which is why we're reaching out to the various associations.
Thank you.
Okay, I could also add to that, Summer, the, for the big box store case that what happened a few years back, Canton Township did support with others from MTA financially. It was not a big commitment from Canton Township, but several did. So I will be calling in that favor in the near future if this thing evolves. Okay?
Thank you.
That's part, part of my plan. And Emery, you had a hand raise?
No, I was just asking a question. So obviously, you know, if this, let's say, goes through as it is, in terms of like, on a local level, when you remove a lot of trees, you affect drainage and all kinds of things like that. So would we even have a say in that? And saying, no, you can't remove that because it will affect, it will flood, you know, the whole area?
Well, I mean, those are certainly the arguments that we made to Judge Stee, and he was not impressed by them. He thought we had to come up with some kind of, excuse me, actual analysis of what the impact would be, which is very difficult to do. For the time being, we cannot enforce that ordinance. Excuse me. There are other ordinances that are still valid and on the books.
How soon can this be filed? If we vote it?
So if the board acts tonight, the claim of appeal will be filed tomorrow.
And that kind of, what does that do with enforcement? As long as there's an appeal going on?
Even with the appeal, we can't enforce the ordinance.
Is there any additional comments or questions at this time? Any none? Those in favor of the motion by roll call?
Anthony?
Yep.
Foster?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seegrist? Hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Hi. Second motion?
Supervisor, I further move to authorize the law firm Rosati Schultz Joppik and I'm Spuchler to continue its representation of Canton Township in this matter.
Support. Those in favor of the second motion, thank you. Those in favor of the second motion presented?
Anthony?
By roll call?
Yes.
Foster?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seegrist? Hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Yes.
Ian Williams?
Hi. Item G nine, approved budget amendment and supply purchase for twenty twenty elections.
Mister Supervisor, in the form of two motions, I move to amend the election budget by approving a transfer in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars from the account number listed to the other account number.
Support. Okay, in terms of background, I'll read that brief background, and then Michael, if you'd like to add anything. The state of Michigan changed from the format of the AV envelopes, and the clerk's office has reestablished its stockpile, needs to reestablish stockpile to comply with the best recommended standards. The March elections saw historic turnout for mail requests, and the current stockpile is estimated to be insufficient to support the remaining elections as demand has continued to grow. Is estimated to grow exponentially in the wake of COVID nineteen. Is there anything additional, or do you wish you'd like that?
Nothing in particular, other than keep in mind, there is a potential for, for reimbursement of the supplies we will be purchasing by the state of Michigan because their standards have changed from the March election to the August election. This is also going to cover purchases for August and November, which is why I'm asking for such a large amount. We are just trying to get our inventory up for worst-case scenarios, and by worst-case scenarios, I just mean the most difficult inch from an election day. I think more people voting and voting by mail is fantastic, and I would support that. It's the safer choice right now especially, and it's that people can vote from, from, from home with ease.
Very good. Is there any questions, comments from trustees? None? Those in favor of the first motion is presented by roll call? Or the motion?
Anthony? Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seegrist? Hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi. Second motion, please, Michael.
Supervisor, I move to approve the purchase of envelopes and secrecy sleeves for the remainder of twenty twenty elections, the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars from the previously used vendor, Printing Systems Incorporated, and waive the bidding process for this purchase.
Support.
Okay. Those in favor of the second motion as presented by roll call? Vote, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Hi.
Graham Hudek?
Hi.
Seegrist? Hi. Slavens?
Hi.
Snyderman?
Hi.
Williams?
Hi. That completes our formal agenda for this evening. Do we have any hands, hand raised in the public out there?
Well, you do it, Mr. McCloslin is back on. I'm going to give, I hope he's still here. He said he has six o'clock, six o'clock meeting.
Ten after six now.
Well, he just dropped.
Yeah.
Oh, but in, well, do you want to email him?
Yeah, I'll call him in the morning.
Okay.
I will call him. All right. At this point, is there any additional staff comments? Chris, go ahead, Jade?
I just wanted to update the board on, in January, you will all approve the residential cross-connection program for Hydro Corp. to go out there, and they are starting their first round of inspections next week. So I just am doing it more for an FYI, in case you see them out there. They will be in the northeast corner of the township around Canton Center, from Canton Center to Cherry Hill, just west of Beck. But they'll be easily identified with signage where they're doing the external inspections. They are not going into people's homes. They're only doing the external inspections at this time, and then we'll communicate back and work with staff for the next phase. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. And then I wanted to just touch base on the public meetings at the theater. I'm working with Director Holmberger on putting together a setup for public meetings out at the theater because we do have to hold public hearings. One would be for the planning commission, and then I did misspeak in my update last week. We do have to have a public hearing for the sidewalk program. So we'll be having that, I think, believe, June ninth is what we are shooting for, to have a first public meeting out at the theater, and we'll work through the, through those specifics with facilities to prepare for that, to make sure that we're all adhering to social distancing and every other CDC guideline that is out there.
Well, they've got, before we go to trustees, any other directors or deputy directors like to make any comments at this point? Wendy's waving ahead, no. Greg, you're good. Chris is good. Okay. Trustees, Mike, did you enjoy, please?
I just wanted to, Director Myers' retirement was effective Friday, and I just wanted to wish him the best and, you know, express gratitude for his service to Canton Township. You know, he will, he will be missed, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Let the board know that Supervisor, myself, and the treasurer did go to fire today to, just to talk. We had, we've gone to police a couple days ago, went to fire today, just to touch base while we're in the middle of the COVID environment and hear any concerns that they had, answer any questions they had, and just kind of discuss overall where we are and then directionally what was going on going forward. So that was a good conversation, good to see everybody, you know, they are out in the community doing some pretty challenging work, and where we expressed our gratitude, we expressed the board's gratitude to them as well.
Thank you. Summer?
I have a couple of questions, I have a couple of questions for Director Trumbull. I think it was last week, all of the days are running together, but I think it was last week, we spoke with your team and Pat about the CDBG funds and running that program through Wayne Metro. And I'm just wondering on that, if you have an update from either them or for HUD on getting that process moving?
Yeah, so our five-day public comment period has ended for the initial public hearing that we had to amend our application. Unfortunately, we got word from HUD after another update that we also are required to update our five-year consolidated plan. So we're going to have another public hearing on Tuesday to get all those i's dotted, t's crossed. The good news that we have heard from HUD, though, is that any COVID-related stuff, as long as it was after the emergency was declared, as long as it's after March first, we can reimburse any of the costs associated with that at that point in time. So we are going to put some information in the focus regarding how members of our community can contact Wayne Metro to get rental or mortgage assistance as a result of the COVID. Also, Wayne Metro has a website. I don't have the website address off the top of my head, but we're going to put a link to it on our website. They have, that, one of the benefits of working with them really is that they know how to administer these programs. That's what they do. They do a lot of this work with the city of Detroit as far as rental assistance, and additionally, they receive significant more funding for Wayne County and not just Canton specific. So I think they have another three million dollars that they can use towards our Canton residents that can help with utilities, unfortunately funeral costs associated with it, additional rental assistance if our CDBG funding runs out for that, and a number of other items as well. So we're going to put a link to that on our website. We're getting some information in the focus, and as soon as we get this public hearing, the second public hearing thing, the RBA ready to go, we will get all this information posted on our website on who to contact.
And my second question was, I heard yesterday that they were anticipating that the school aid budget was going to be cut twenty-five percent because of lost revenue due to COVID. Have you heard anything about what cuts will be taking place to local government because of COVID? Because I know people aren't buying things in stores, and typically, that comes from sales tax.
Right. So what I've heard so far, there's, there's a revenue estimating conference at the state on Friday, and I am on a webinar on Monday to hear the results of that, to get any sort of indication from the state. What I have heard so far is they are expecting the revenue sharing, excuse me, the sales revenue to be down by as much as fifty percent for the months of March and April, which means that's how ours gets passed along from the state, is based on the actual sales tax collected. So if they are expecting fifty percent less, that means our June payment is probably going to be fifty percent of what that typically would be, which is about a six hundred thousand dollar cut right off the, right off the bat. Additionally, I mean, sales tax isn't going to pick back up right after that, I would imagine. It's not going to go right back to normal, but I don't know what the state's really anticipating, what the economists are really saying, so I should have more information on that on Monday. I'm working through projections right now as far as our furlough days and how, what the impact is going to be to us. On top of that, a number of the state's, a good chunk of the state's discretionary spending is likely going to go down, which a portion of our statehood revenue is discretionary as well. So I'm, hopefully, we'll get some sort of indication from the state as well there. I would there. I would anticipate that's going to be cut at least twenty-five percent, and that's probably what I would use in projections. Hopefully, I'll have more information on that on Monday, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, I'd also like to thank you, thank Josh for his service, for his years of service, and congratulate him on his retirement. Chris, Deputy Director Chris, I know that you had a lot of seniors asking for masks, and you had, some of the groups have given you some. Are you still seeing a lot of seniors up there asking you for help for some of the masks and PPE?
You know, I'll be honest, I will divert that question to the supervisor. I honestly, I was getting some requests from him through the social media side with Kristen Thomas, and I was collecting the masks through those separate groups, churches and seniors, and basically been passing them on to the emergency manager, and he's been distributing them.
So to that end, is, still have the COVID hotline going, and we are still receiving calls, and Jonathan LaFever and Patty Esseling have been running masks out to individual houses and homes. Also, the American Chinese Association donated, I think it was seventy, also through the APIA group out of the high schools, have donated seventy food boxes, and each of those food boxes also contain masks and gloves. So I, I think we're doing a pretty good job filling the needs as we become aware of them, so we don't have a shortage of material because of there's been significant donations in. It's just a function of reacting when people do call, and the guys are doing a great job of that so far.
Thanks.
Any additional work coming? Okay, so we're going to meet, Stephen, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to say that I, I hope you guys are all well, and I'm actually starting to miss some of you, maybe, well, all of you. Maybe, maybe not Mike, but, you know, sorry.
I love you, Steve.
Trustee Anthony, something to share?
The National Services, I've got a message from a Canton resident that's having his basement remodeled, and he can't finish it until there's an inspection. Is there inspectors out there, and what's the status?
Yes, so the building department is processing everything that they can as far as permits coming in, and anything that it would be in a external inspection, we are not going into people's homes at this time. I know we've had conversations with residents, and we're looking at what kind of protocol we can put together to, to let our inspectors go in these homes, but at this particular moment, we are not going in their homes until the stay-at-home worker is lifted.
Thank you.
You had another thing you'd like to share?
Yeah, May tenth through the sixteenth has been designated National Law Enforcement Week, and I'd just like to thank all of our federal, state, and local law enforcement officers for what they do every day to keep all of us safe and to protect us in, in every way. So to all law enforcement officials, stay safe, and thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. All right, next meeting will be a week from tonight, five o'clock, and this will be a Zoom meeting, again, not at the theater, or will it be at the theater? Wendy, last conversation, it'll be a Zoom meeting again, got it? And then the following subsequent meeting, I think we'll be out at the theater based on Jade's need for social distancing for his public hearings.
It could be outside at the golf course.
What's the purpose of next week's meeting? Is it a study session, or are we doing general?
Well, it's, it's the CBPG update to the five-year plan that's time-bound, or the rental assistance program, so that was a new requirement CBPG threw back at us that we have to respond to.
Okay.
And so it's time-bound, that's why we're having a meeting, and, and the, I think we're going to continue on for the time being, is meetings will only be held when we have a time-bound or a legal reason or necessity to meet, otherwise, we'll delay things as long as we can. But once we schedule to have a meeting, it is okay to go ahead and get things, you know, normal business done at that time, because we're already gathered. So Wendy and the HUD folks are, are meeting next week. All right? Any additional comments, question? Mike, it's a little squirrely at this point, but do you see any raised hands or public activity there?
For like a last call for public comment?
Yeah.
I see.
We could do that.
Seth, what's a good phone number to call that's inspection, if an employee has, a citizen has an issue?
Jade, I think he's, he's asking, what number should he call if he wants an inspection?
Having his basement remodeled.
Sorry. Yeah, haven't, haven't just called the, the building phone number, which is, I believe, four, three, or three, nine, four, fifty-two-hundred, if I'm not mistaken?
Three, nine, four, fifty-two-hundred.
Fifty-two-hundred, okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jade. Michael, back to you. Any, any raised hands?
Nope.
Okay, all right, I, I think that completes our agenda for today. Call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you, Summer. Those in favor of the motion is presented by roll call, vote, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudek.
Aye.
Seagrist, aye. Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for participating and your patience in this new surreal times. Have a good night, be safe. Bye.